Over the table, lands the chair.
Yeah. You know that Joyce and I dressed alike tonight?
Yeah.
And we're all early.
Yeah, except for me.
No, no.
Although I am live streaming now, so.
The only the Zoom, it's not on YouTube yet, not until you hit that little button.
Hit the button.
Oh, then we're live streaming. I guess so. Ketchup. Hi. Are you um? Are you near some of the forest? Do you need reading glasses or?
Yeah. Just dime store glasses.
Mike, these are.
Don't you need any?
Well, I can, I can make my things, I can make my thing, I can make my fonts bigger.
Oh, these are great. Thank you. Are they dime store?
No, no. But they're just reading glasses. There's nothing special about them. I like those, those are cute. They were buried in prescription lots.
Thirty-nine dollars as opposed to like three hundred.
I have several pairs of those. Then prescription ones various places. And I live alone, that's that.
Cut the weeds and then trim them, or are you doing the piles?
I have about twenty pairs all over the park.
Me too.
And I didn't pick up one.
Absolutely. My intention is to write things and then I write them on the agenda. Hi Rand, it's Sandy. His wife Connie and I worked together for many, many years.
Small world.
I know. It goes to Joyce.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Another one?
This is me tonight.
Make the correction, I mean, I can announce it.
It's on April.
I know, Joyce caught it.
Good seven eighty-two, Joyce.
Are they?
So it says it on number four and seven A as well. Oh, excuse me, everyone, that was right. Never mind.
Two out of three.
That statement's no longer offered, right?
Been a long day.
Yeah.
Well, two out of three isn't bad, I got two out of three. Just had Bruce check.
Let me hand these down.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe not to Joyce, she doesn't vote. And I just made five copies.
Then we forget as well. For who?
Yeah, I didn't make enough copies.
Oh, I thought you said you need five. I can share with Bruce.
And we can share this.
I got all the way up there and I didn't bring my laptop. I also like. It does. Hey, it's Dan. Were you with Pat? Okay. Okay, we'll call. Name to order, council meeting, I guess, council. May sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. Um, would you all join me in the place? Thank you.
All right, roll call. Uh, council member Susan Braxton. Uh, Bruce Sherrill. Council or vice mayor, Ann Charkinian.
Here.
Mayor Sandy Staples.
Here.
Right, given the attendance, you have a forum. So I'll turn the time over to Mayor to do approval of the agenda.
Thank you. Uh, fourth item on the agenda is to approve the city council regular meeting agenda of um for tonight, and the date is wrong on the agenda right there, so if anyone would, we'll have that corrected for the minutes, but make a correction there. Uh, the major sections are public comment, the consent agenda, and then ordinance in public hearings, regular consent, regular agenda items, um, council committee, committee reports and administrative reports. So do I hear a motion to have the agenda approved with the correction of the date on item four?
So moved.
Hey, we have to do by roll call vote because once again, we are doing live stream, so council member Braxton, Susan?
Uh, uh, aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
And Sandy, aye. So motion is approved. Onto number four, public comment. Under provisions of the California code, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. And um, for any of you who aren't from, Joyce is not familiar with, would you fill out a um, comment form? So we spell names correctly and associations. Comments are limited to five minutes or less and speakers are requested to state their name for the record on YouTube because we are live streaming. Under provisions of California government code, the city councils prohibited from material discussing or acting on any item that is not on the regular agenda unless it's of emergency nature or an urgent need to take action arose after the posting of the agenda. And for those making comment, we don't have a kiosk or podium, but so the microphone picks up voices. We do stand for the public comment. And at this time. Hi Rand.
My name is Rand Puggett, I live in Sutter Creek off of Ridge Road. I've been a resident of Emador County for forty-four years. And I taught at Emador High School, the art school department for thirty-two years. I've been retired for technical college, so uh, which is a good thing. Um, I painted a lot of murals around the county and some of them are large uh, paintings, but they call them murals. And there are um, some are inside, some are outside, and you hope you've seen some of them somewhere. And I have seen the wall there as you drive north into town, that is just begging for a mural. Sorry. I have a proposal and um, I made up a little document for each of you, just to take a look and see what I had in mind.
Thank you.
I have five popping, I think I need or five uh sorry. Somebody else here. Um, the mural would be a history mural, which is my preference to uh, uh, illustrate um, the rich history of uh, the towns that are doing this was my uh of the option that I got, I actually changed for a little bit. So, but it would have um has, if there were a parchment uh, with the history of Emador, uh, Emador City uh, from, and there, in online, there were a variety of different ways I see you have a history of Emador City right up there. Um, and this could change, this could be whatever, but this is just a suggestion as to what might occur. There's a picture of Jose Maria Emador on the side here because honestly, the name of the county and the town is uh uh, your city is part of it. It's would, I have Emador City, smallest incorporated city in California. Uh, and then established in, I think we established was eighteen, nineteen fifty, officially. So, so that's what I had on the side. There's a map that you've used, I've seen it in advertisements that you have, which identifies that, and that would be right here. That identifies the uh, the various historical buildings um, in town. And then the rest is decoration uh, up and around the side there. Um, I incorporated the windows to look a little bit more rustic and as if, and this could be stone or brick or even wood. Uh, effect to just give it a little character off to the side, so this is what I'm suggesting. To have them, this is what we'd be here at this point. Uh, there is a space for people who would contribute, anybody wanting to contribute in some way, financially or supplies. Uh, they're all listed there, if you've seen my other murals, you know that those are um, people are prominently displayed, those thanks to you for being a part of this project. Um, native sons, native daughters, the arts festivals, and even California um, history society. Anyway, there are obviously a lot of options, personal, private, uh, people, families have uh, been involved in the campaign. So if you've seen those, the ones that I've done, especially the one at Tressler's on the corner. Eighty-eight, forty-nine in Jackson.
That's my favorite.
It shows, again, the people who were involved, Keith Sweet, the spearheaded one. See, if this uh, design doesn't uh, thrill you, I'm willing to work with anybody for ideas that they think is more, are more appropriate. Um, if this is not a good time for this, uh, I'm retiring. So I'm available a lot of time, you know, a year from now or even further, whatever uh, your preference is, this would be an option for presentations, so just for your consideration, buddy. Bring, show it to the owner. Do you have any questions from?
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was um in the, in the design, is there a way that you can also highlight the role of the Miwok? You know, the people who are here before.
I think it'd be important.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I think that we're trying to represent more of that in, in, in town.
Right, and I'm glad to work with you and we worked that out on how to I have several vignette pieces in on the side here, that could be incorporated into the main part of the the map to show that aspect of this, of this one. I did not write anything out because I was waiting to history-wise, and like I said, I see you have something up there, but there were a variety of uh at least ten major um, uh, write-ups about how, how the town began. It's not mentioning the Miwok, sounds like when she brought that up.
Yeah.
So um, anything that you feel is something that is important.
We can, we can work with, get input from both of the tribes, for both of the tribes.
Now, I just had sectioned off a one piece of the wall, I did, it's about the same size as the Jackson sign on the side of the uh, fire station, which is one of them. Um, the entire wall is sixty feet long, if you like. I made a notation on the bottom there about, they're not hot and across for doing the entire wall. If you have ideas for like photographs or whatever, do something. Like accommodate, whatever you feel is important.
So if I may ask, when it comes to a wall like this, um, is this similar to other walls you've done? But this one is privately owned, this isn't owned by the city. So it would have to be a deal with the current landlord, which happens to be sitting in that chair out there. So potentially it could be a conflict of interest, given the, the council's approval. So we have to be careful here, but uh, normally, do you have the city pay yours for your services when it's a private wall? Or do you normally pay?
The city of Jackson paid me for the various murals I did for them.
Thanks.
So and Keith Sweet was the, like I said, spearheaded, he was coordinator and, and uh, the idea inception and all that.
And again, I call this for annoying, like the fire station is probably owned by the city.
Most likely, I didn't know.
Okay, and then the, the, I know there's the corner of eighty-eight, right there, that mural that's right there, if it's a current. Is that any property that's private?
Private unit, by Tressler thing.
Did a private individual donate that space?
Exactly.
And then the city paid for the, and then the city paid for the, the mural itself?
The only thing he asked for was savage, and he put up on the side, if you look at the corner, it says Tressler's and uh, something about his father. That was his only.
Was similar probably with Sutter Hill, is that this privately owned building?
Um, Jim Swift, yes, Jim Swift owned that. Uh, the city of Sutter Creek paid for it. Um, but Jim was very accommodating also, he said, yeah, I want this, I need some. This is, actually, this is a better wall than the ones I've worked on, Cimber Block is a real pain. This is a very smooth wall at this point, so anyway, that's here and there at this point.
Okay.
We, we would need to look into what, what situation that is, given that it's private wall, just to double check. But like the mayor said, if we can't take any action this evening, just because it's obviously an agenda.
Sorry, I have two questions. And maybe it's in your notes, if you pass out this, because of the ballpark possible.
It's here.
Question thirty-three from your office, correct, it is tied in my stance to what's positive.
And then, secret, there's been some talk in town about the map. Uh, and can I figure out a way uh, to connect it to a QR code that has, that people could uh walk around or get down the phone when things close around here?
I don't know if I could do the little dots.
So, have you had, stood up in our experience or not?
No, I got. Another legal aspect is I'm not sure about um, uh, Caltrans type of thing, signage. I don't think it's a big problem.
Yeah, unless you want to put something out on the highway.
Yeah.
That Caltrans turn Highway forty-nine forward to the city in like two thousand six, or we did the bridge.
It's not selling anything.
Right.
But it's not leaving the sales pitch or looking unsure. That's my, my baseline.
Well, thank you, Rand, and thank you for the handout, we'll make the handout available just, because the residents who'd like a copy, that's okay? No, no, that's, it's perfect, that's what you, that's.
We can include this in a packet next month.
Thank you, thank you, Rand.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Have you thought of the letters of Emador City with the images in the letters like you did for Jackson?
Uh, that's an op, that's a possibility. If you're, if the group, well, community involved. Level, like I said, I'd be glad to change the design if you're not crazy about this one. Uh, obviously, we'll want to incorporate the Miwoks, and uh, so that would be an option too. Like I said, your next, as you decide, just let me know, and I'm open to whatever suggestions you we can just do another mock-up for you up quickly. I would, if you choose, whatever you choose, I'm going to do a thorough painting of it on small scale, so I have a scale to work with, and uh, and so you would see that, okay, this is going to. Now, in the process, things do change a little bit, okay, this doesn't quite fit in, so there is an element of some painting.
Well, thank you, Rand, thank you.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate this. Is there additional public comment?
I'm from a certain fire district, so I just wanted to bring up, we're going to be trying, I think, rent today. Burn some pile of concrete. Uh, so if we get some volunteers together, we'll come out, start the piles, and we need some volunteers to attend them. It's all going to be ten, depending on a couple of things, obviously the weather. Currently, it looks pretty good, the second thing we just have to make sure it's a bird day or the Emador Air Pollution Control. And then the last thing is we just will need to get an air pollution control permit.
We, we have the burn permit. We have a two-year burn, we got the.
Nice.
You're good to go, can we just see the copy of that, let's make sure we have a copy of that?
Yeah, I think I gave that to you, Joyce.
So, plan is to start at nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock? And where do you want people to meet you?
Uh, we can meet at the fire station parking lot.
Got that, and about how many volunteers do you, do, the minimum you need?
Well, you probably should have at least two for pile.
Okay.
I'm not sure how many piles we have exactly down there. I'm not sure how many piles we have.
Right.
So what the plan to be is get them going, once they start burning down, we'll transfer them to the volunteers. Uh, and basically, we'll, we'll make trips back and forth, we'll check on them.
So just talking about the creek.
Sounds like eight till ten something.
Got it, okay, we'll get the word out on that. All right, thank you, thank you. Any other public comment tonight?
Well, I'll have one thing, um, uh, last month, I mentioned that um, the speed study for old forty-nine coming out of Sutter Creek, um, determined that we would, uh, that they would decrease the speed limit from fifty-five to fifty. Um, and if that, I mean, that doesn't sound like very much, um, but I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday when they were discussing this to approve the, the speed study package in total. Um, and there are several roads in the county where the speed limit went up. Um, and the, the issue with having a posted speed limit that has a speed study to support it is that allows law enforcement to issue tickets. If there's no to use rail and to, and to ticket people, they can't, if, if, if there's no speed study to back up a posted speed limit then somebody can contest a speeding ticket. According to the people who, who do this, anyway, um, so, um to my surprise, um, like our, our portion of speed study was not contested in any way. But these other areas, so there were two supervisors who voted against the package, but it did pass three to two. So, so they will be moving forward with that, and I believe that that will include you know, you know, actually, our fifty-five mile an hour sign is down anyway, but they'll, they'll posted at fifty, and um, you know, that gives us, you know, gives us something. So, you know, if there's people doing over fifty, then
So, so Anna, if I can ask, it sounds like they only do an increment of five? If we, if we did in a couple, another couple of years, went for another speed study, would they lower it another five to forty?
No, no, well, it just, so what happens is, is they do a, they, what do we call it? They um, do a sample of people who are using the road. And so they record all the speeds and then they have a number that's at the eighty-fifth percentile. And so it has to be with, so it's the nearest five mile an hour to the eighty-fifth percentile. So if we do another speed study in the future and everybody's driving slower, we can lower the speed, you know? Um, but this is good for seven years.
Okay.
So probably we won't get another one for seven years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the small, small things.
Little baby steps.
Yep.
Okay, any other public comment tonight, or public input? The public comment is closed. We'll go on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion in the form listed. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless before city council votes on the motion to adopt members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Items withdrawn from the consent agenda will be heard after the rest of the consent agenda is approved. There are two items on the consent agenda, the regular council minute meeting, excuse me, the regular council meeting minutes of April eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, and the fiscal financial statement.
I have a financial question.
Oh, so you'd like that removed, and then we'll go down afterwards?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the min, the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Okay, again, we have to do roll call, Bruce?
Yes.
Susan?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
And Sandy, aye, motion's passed, so financial fiscal statement, Susan?
I have my old question of, did the sewer uh, uh, repairs at Rhonda Olman's connection to the sewer line? What was it, a thirty thousand dollar job of?
Hasn't been paid yet.
Has it been resolved that it's their problem and not ours?
But it's not, we're still working on it.
Okay, and I thought Pat was going to write a letter.
I am, but I was waiting for confirmation, so I'm going to I'm, I need to have that behind me that will say, if the city contends that liability rests with you for following reasons.
Larry said you need one, did you get it?
Uh, wait, the thing, the problem, what I need to do is check my spam filter. I, and I checked it today, and there wasn't anything from you today, would have been sent before. But I don't just routinely delete it, because I know there's certain emails like from Joyce and from you go to spam, but I checked that to make sure and I transferred my separate folder for Andy.
Uh, Larry sent it the day after.
Uh, Larry sent it the day after our last meeting, oh, so just.
Thank you. Okay. Any other question on the financials, Susan?
I'll get that out.
Anyone else?
If you don't have.
Is there a motion to accept the financials as submitted?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, and roll call again, Susan?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
And Sandy?
Aye.
So the financials are accepted. We have an ordinance to discuss tonight, a second reading of ordinance number one eighty-six. An ordinance of the people of the city of Amador City, California, adding chapter three point one two to the Amador City municipal code to establish a one-quarter percent transactions and use fee for a period of ten years, said tax to be administered by the state board of equalization. It's been posted not quite for thirty days.
Correct.
And the, the corrections that you suggested, the addition of, the additional was added.
So at this point, we just have to ask, if there's, given those changes from the last time, are there any other, uh, changes that have been submitted? Either by email, or at this point, does the council have any changes they would wish to make? And does the council waive the reading?
Yeah, do we need a motion to do that?
You don't.
We waive.
So waived.
So waived, yeah.
So I'm happy to, like I said last time, I'm happy to read the whole thing, but I think. So if there, that's the thing, if there are no, then we can, we need to set a special meeting, which, um, as of the year, the action is determined, it can be either Tuesday or Thursday. It can either be this week or the next, which the council will then need a motion and a vote to determine. But in order for us to be able to collect the tax that comes from it before the next fiscal year after July, we have to have that resolution before our next June meeting, which requires a special meeting. We, we resist doing that in most cases unless it's an urgent or a matter like this that requires it. So, there, I'll turn it back over to you to determine a time, and then to see if there's a motion to approve that time, and we'll move forward. And staff will do the appropriate things to make sure that that meeting is posted and noticed appropriately for the public as well as the council.
Okay, just for general information, there is a twenty-four hour notice on special meetings, and we'll make sure that goes out. But the dates to be considered, the initial ones that we looked at, and this is moving on to the regular agenda items. I'm just going to jump to that and then go back to the process. Um, the meeting could be either Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, or Thursday, May thirtieth. And, um, it is possible also to have it Thursday of next week, which would be, what, the, we're sixteenth to twenty-third? So.
I am not available on the thirtieth.
Thirtieth is out, so it could be the twenty-third or the twenty-eighth. Are there any other conflicts for council members?
What days are those?
Tuesday, a Thursday is the twenty-third, and a Tuesday is the twenty-eighth. One is just before Memorial Day, one is just after.
It says here thirty May, not the twenty-third.
We, yeah, we did the recount. We have one more day we can use.
Oh, I see, you could also do the twenty-third.
We can, we can.
And it's not the twenty-eighth?
Um, yes, twenty-eighth or twenty-third. Anne is not available here, and since we have only four council members, we really need to have all four council members here.
And I think I'm not available on the twenty-third. Let me just check this.
Just do it the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I'm not available the twenty-third.
Then, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, are there any other conflicts? And time of day, would you like to do it earlier than seven?
Sure.
What's your work schedule? Six is the earliest? Can six work for people?
Yes.
We will do it at six o'clock on Tuesday, twenty-eighth of May.
Okay.
Here at city council, we'll have it posted twenty-four hours in advance. For the rest of the agenda of the regular agenda items, there'll be three stages to consideration. The item will be read, not this last one, but the subsequent ones. And the council member or applicant will then offer details and discuss those details. It will go to public comment first. When public comments close, you'll come back to comment from the council members. Again, by roll call, because we are live streaming. So with that, we are on item nine B. Request for a letter from Amador City supporting a proposal to be presented to the Amador Fire Safe Council regarding the creation of a fire break. I turn it over to Steve Cannon.
Good evening, honorable council members. Thank you for allowing me to, uh.
Will I pull up a chair you?
No, that's fine, that's fine. I've been sitting for a while.
Yeah.
So, yeah, my name's Steve Cannon. I'm a registered professional forester. I've been engaged by CJ and Lisa Rendich. They're very much interested in managing and improving their property, which is just east of here on Turner Road. Also comes up, if you look at the map that I included in your, the one map that's the one to two thousand, you can see that it, it, it's down there close to Amador Creek Road, too. Rather large piece of property, nine hundred and one acres. Um, their intention is idealistic. They want to manage this for sustained grazing, uh, rescue wild horses and burrows, cattle grazing. Uh, they got hooked up with me because a local engineer suggested, who was doing some work for him, suggested that maybe I might be able to help them. This is really sort of, in some ways, outside my wheelhouse. Because as a forester, I deal more likely in the higher elevations. Susan and I have known each other for a long time. She's been on the board of the Motherland Land Trust for a long time, and I've worked on that property, too, up in Volcano. But, um, what I came to realize was that the objectives of this couple uh, fit in really well with the idea of helping to protect Amador City. Now, if you look at the last page, where it shows that yellow fuel brake, I want to en- ensure, assure you that that is not going to be the final design. For a couple of reasons. One is, I'd like to contact some of the neighbors and extend it even further. Okay, uh, the other is that there are a couple of spur ridges that we could probably poke our way out. With the way that, that, uh, the technology is, has evolved these days, I can put a piece of machinery on a very steep slope and accomplish the objectives without endangering any, uh, soil erosion or, um, soil compaction or anything like that. Things have really, really progressed significantly since I first started doing this kind of work. All right, now, the other part of it is that I want to make sure that you understand is that these folks are also probably by the end of June going to be talking to the Natural Resources Conservation Service to try and acquire a cost share grant essentially from the NRCS, which is an agency of the, of the Department of Agriculture. And they want to thin out and, and open up and make more fires safe, all the rest of their property. We're looking at probably a grant somewhere in the order of three to four hundred thousand dollars. And they'll be covering part of that under a cost share program. Um, these folks have the means to do this, I can tell you that. Um, it's nice to work with people who have ideals and also have a bank account. So I'm just going to quickly read again the, uh, project description. Construct a shaded fuel break, which means that we're not going to clear cut something. Okay, that's a fire break. They build fire breaks in Southern California where they just open, clear out everything. A shaded fuel break is opened up and thinned so that if there is a need to do backfiring, then that's a spot from which the backfire can be started, okay? So a shaded fuel break of approximately three miles in length by three to four hundred feet wide for an estimated acreage of a hundred and twenty-five acres. The fuel break would be strategically located and constructed on primary ridges, most of which are northwest, southeast trending ridges. The vegetation types on these ridges where the fuel break will be constructed are oak woodland, which are, have interior live oak, buckeye, grapevine, some black oak also. Um, and a couple of ponderosa pines I've noticed out there. Interspersed with heavy white leaf manzanita that has grown since the nineteen sixty-one Rancheria fire. And this stuff is twelve to fifteen feet tall. It, it's, it's rough. It, uh, okay. So, uh, toyon and Man, and Cianothus brush, brush and smaller hardwood trees would be removed, leaving live oaks and occasional conifers with diameters, uh, greater than twelve inches in, uh, DBH or diameter breast height, spaced from twenty to thirty feet apart. Residual trees would be pruned to an approximate height of ten feet to eliminate ladder fuels. So a fire that did burn through there did not progress into the ground. No stream courses exist on the area to be included in the fuel break. The fuel break will be constructed using masticating machines, hand falling and lopping, tractor piling and burning of some slash. So why I'm, why I'm here is to, first of all, let you folks know, okay? Um, I wasn't here in nineteen sixty-one. I was, I was nine years old, you know, in the Bay Area. Okay, yeah, I can imagine. And, and your memories of it are probably, mom and dad were saying, get the hell out of it, right?
No.
Well, mom left, but.
Dad, not the other one. Everybody stayed. Oh, yeah. That's one of the problems, everybody leaving, probably. Do people stay alive?
It was popular, it was pretending they hadn't over tailed a pitch fire.
Oh, okay.
So they said those cop fires didn't end over terrible.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the town.
Yeah. Well, you must have been pretty young. Okay.
He looks young.
You're older than I thought.
Well, he's there.
Anyway, regardless, we don't want that to happen again. And that's one of the reasons why the Rendiches not only want the fuel break, but they also want to treat the rest of their property. And the other reason why I want to try and induce some of the neighbors to treat their property, too. As chief here can tell you, you know, I mean, having one area treated, you know, allows a fire to hook, and, and we don't want that to happen.
And the, the city might want some areas treated, too.
Well, I mean, the input has got to be there. I mean, this is a proposal that's going to be given to the Amador Fire Safe Council. And, uh, the Fire Safe Council will take the proposal. They will consider it and, and weigh the, the benefits of it against some of the other proposals that they've got coming in. The, you know, I know everybody on the Fire Safe Council, because I'm on board of a special district, the Amador Resource Conservation District, and we help the Fire Safe Council out with certain projects in terms of being their fiscal agent and stuff like that. So I know all those people. That's not necessarily going to give me any kind of an advantage. They're very circumspect about what, you know, their decisions, okay? But they will seek then, if they like this, then they will go out and seek funding from either the state of California, which is going to be more problematic in the future. Uh, Gavin spent too much money, and now we don't have as much coming our way. But it's still possible that we could get fire hazard reduction, uh, money for this. Uh, the BLM, Bureau of Land Management, is another source of funding. California State Fire Safe Council is another source of funding. Uh, and as I said, the, uh, Natural Resources Conservation Service would be uh, utilized in the area outside. Actually, we could propose this fuel break through the NRCS as a part of a project. But, you know, we'll hit it, we'll try and kill every bird with as few stones as we can.
Steve, would it be possible for the city to include some trees in Culver Park that I talked to you about?
We, yeah, yeah.
With the, you know. Little pines.
Yeah, yeah, we'd, we'd have to look and see whether that fit in strategically with the rest of this, this project. That might be a separate project altogether, Susan. Yeah. So that's about it. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
So you are asking for?
A letter of support, a letter of support. I wasn't as so presumptuous as to write it for you as I have had done to me, uh, the Resource Conservation Districts, you know? I prefer to be respectful and let you folks come up with it. And if it takes another month to get that in, that's okay, but I mean, otherwise, I would like, it would be wonderful if somebody would make a motion that the mayor could sign a letter of support for this project so that I can add it on to this pro- proposal.
Well, first, we're going to take public comment. Thank you. And you're welcome to stay because it's directed towards you.
Yeah.
But.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, too.
Well, we.
At the right time.
Thank you.
Always finding news, always.
So, is there questions from the general public? Comment on the proposal. Elena? Would you stand so I pick up your voice, Elena?
CJ and Lisa, the power builders, are, have done an amazing job. They've been very, very respectful and responsible. They've done a lot of children, and made a lot of new contacts within accounting in a really short period of time. And so, um, we were fortunate to call my friends, and they have just, they're really, um, good stewards of the land. But they're, they're, they will be good owners.
So we have support from the gallery. Dominic?
I don't want to pour cold water on this stuff, but, yeah, um. Uh, we have some of these things out, we'll push it. So just to clarify, I, we're probably in this county, probably the most advanced of a few part of the ranch links. The fire district. We're going to be very active with lots of running, playing, but very, again, we're close to the second one. Very provided, including, uh, open area of that. Anyone want? So, uh, I always explain to people about fire breaks. Fire breaks are fences. Sometimes sensors are made to keep things out, sometimes sensors are made to keep things out. Unfortunately, fire breaks, fire breaks only good with firestorms on the right side of the fire break. So examples, firestorms on this side of the fire break, it won't protect the city, but, uh, well, it won't protect the city. That's one of the problems. Uh, the second thing is, is I use approach, is when you throw a pebble in the pond, creek swirls out. Our biggest spread isn't outside Amber, so the, our biggest spread is inside Amber City. So I, really, the projects that are happening should start in the biggest impacts, in the middle pine grove, in the middle pioneer, in the middle Cedar Creek, in Little Amber City, where the concentration populations and then work your way out. By doing projects out, we're not, we're basically, we're creating a break, but might not benefit the populations, probably. That's one of those things. The other thing is they've done multiple studies on fuel breaks. Uh, LA Times just did a real big one. They actually, it's all interactive, you go on their site and everything else, where basically shows a lot of these fuel breaks never work. Because when, especially if you have a wind turbine fire, Paradise, you had Embers fine over a mile. So they blew right past all the fuel breaks laying in the city. A fuel break gives people a false sense of security, right? It's like a fence. People put a fence up, think my house is safe. Well, if a burglar wants to get in, he can do it. So the problem is, so those are some of the things I look at. The other thing is the fuel break, I think you estimated five hundred thousand.
Well, that, I, I, I'm talking about the NRCS project.
Okay, because, uh, I gave you a handout there for one who's over in Marin County, Napa County. And, uh, their estimate was seven hundred thousand for seventy-seven acres. They got it to five hundred because they had a lot of donated stuff got donated, which was still five hundred thousand. So you're looking at substantial cost per acre for the initial. The next step is, I think you brought up about this, but the next step is the maintenance. Fuel breaks have to be maintained every three to five years. It's just, it's a constant makeup. It's like mowing your lawn. You just don't mow your lawn once. You have to mow it constantly, keep it under control. Fuel breaks are the same way. What happens is you get the initial grant for doing fuel breaks, and then the next three to five years, people go try to find another brand, help maintain the fuel breaks, but there's no grants. So then his question is, who's going to maintain it, who's going to pay for it going forward? So then all of a sudden, you basically created a fuel break that's made it good for three to ten years. And then it's back to what it was before. Now, here at the property owners are talking about doing the whole property, which is awesome.
Ultimately, yeah, over a longer period of time.
Right.
And, and the maintenance also would be, can, would be done by them using grazing animals, tarting people.
And that's, that's actually what we need to do. So I use a term is, when people, when you buy a piece of property, you become the steward of the property. You become mother nature, right? So what would mother nature do? So in most cases, mother nature would. So what would mother nature do? So in most cases, mother nature would clean these places up with fire. Literally, if fire would come, we'd clean them up and let them basically, the trees would spray us uh space out. And you'd have these uh interconnection, the trees would be okay, the grass would burn off. The reason we have these issues is because we, the fire service, we, environmentalists, we all stop fire. So we allow this massive growth of fuel in, in the forests and everything else that now are there that how do we deal with? So if you look where the fuel break is, which I mean, it's, it's a ridge and everything else, the problem is on the other side of the fuel break is just manzaniha for manzaniha for manzaniha.
To east.
Yes, east. That's, and historically, the fires in Amber County are easterly driven or northernly driven. So an easterly fire coming down with drainage would come into that, produce tons of embers and go over a fuel break. So I'm not against fuel breaks. Uh, they're a good tool. The other thing is, fuel breaks, to really make them work well, you have to have firefighters on them. Every time there's been a fuel break with no firefighters, it passes the fuel break. So you have to have people there when the fire hits. So an example is the sixty-one fire, they were on Amador Road trying to stop from jumping Amador Road and what happened? They all stood and watched it go right over their heads and then everybody's running back down the hill trying to pass it. Yeah, so uh I love the idea, I love what we're trying to do. Everybody who owns property needs to take responsibility for their property. And it's not, we're not going to fix this mess in five years, ten years, thirty years. Took us a hundred years to create this mess, this fire, and take us if we concentrated fifty years to clean it up. Our problem, like I think you just brought up a little bit about Newson, where there is no more money. The money that was there is going to be drained away. The last time there was a when there was a cash problem, one of the first things they pulled money was from fire. So I'm assuming that's probably going to happen again. So uh I like ideas like this and everything else. Uh, I don't know if this is the right one for Amber City.
But it's, it's not, I don't think he's asking for another city to pay anything. It's not, kind of property, right?
Right.
Property, because he's getting a grant basically, a grant.
No, not from us.
Yes. He wants to get a grant.
Yes, but it doesn't involve back in the little city, right? Because the number of support is out of the grant.
Yeah, and it, yeah, it's to, to go to the fire safe council. And and so the fire safe council will see that there is community support for this project, and then they go out and look for the grant.
Right, and see, the reason I say that, there's always so much grant on Penn State. So and that's where I, I, I've been told worse, I've been doing this for fifteen years, going through, saying, hey, we need to look at this differently. The other thing, I'm a third colony, is if you want to help somebody for grant, by, oh, using camp, right, you go, I'm going to go look about it. I asked a gentleman after, okay, what are you going to do in five years? No one's responsible. Not my problem.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm sitting there going, whoa, 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 whoa. So I go to the fire safe council, I go to all the students, I say, hey, if you want to do something, grant, give a grant. But in five years, they have to do the property, or they paid a grant back. We, we, we're, we, we've created a situation, and this, I see this all the time with these firewise communities. People are creating firewise communities only so that you get a grant. And so they basically stopped working on the property. They leave their property alone because they figure if I can get a grant, I can get somebody else to pay for it. And I keep telling people, you need to clean your property whether you get a grant or not. So we've, we have to work with fire state council and things like that and say, hey, we might help, but there's a handout, but there's also you and that type of things. So I'm, I'm not against the project. I just said, you know, if we have limited amount of monies, uh fire state council should put them into areas, then drop them into the population centers. Uh, other studies in here have showed that rather than doing fire breaks, if you come in and harden up people's homes and you do stuff in the neighborhoods, it's actually excellent. Uh, houses better than fire breaks do.
So if I, the big, the, the small picture here is that for us to look at this project, but not be complacent, that this is going to
This is
not, this is
The tool.
A tool. Yes, okay.
Not the tool.
Yes.
So the, the, the biggest tool we can ever do is everybody in town sits down and says, I'm going to clean around my house, I'm going to do all the brush away from my house, I'm going to change out wood products on the exterior to cement or metal products.
Yeah.
The other thing we talked about where in nineteen sixty-one, everybody stayed behind to fight the fire. And I always tell people, if you're mentally and physically able and you did your work at your house, you shouldn't be running from it, you should stay behind. Uh, they don't do the studies about houses in Paradise or Santa Rosa or La La that were saved, but people stayed behind, saved their own homes. So there's, it's a bigger picture we have to look at. Uh, the only group in this whole thing that did it right was the Native Americans. They're the ones that did it right. We, we all, the rest of us screwed it up. I mean, I, me included, we all, the fire service, we screwed this thing up. So it's going to take a while. This is a tool in a prop. Uh, and might, might, might not be the most appropriate. I mean, if there is a grant saying, we got money for you, or we got money for that, I would say we need to put the money here.
Well, we have, we have the project.
What's that?
We have a project right in, right in town that the city owns that we need to
Right, so and those are
Pines are right over houses.
Right, and those are the projects we need to focus on here. Because those are the ones that are going to benefit citizens in the area most.
And I think we're talking two important things, you know, there's there's a project going on that's not directly city property, but may have a, a, as you said, a benefit and be a tool. That's one consideration. And the bigger one is the city needs to come up with some projects and do our own sorts.
Yeah, and, and individual property owners have to also take responsibility for their properties. It's uh, I always say that, you know, people buy a piece of property, first thing you put up is some trespassing sign, right? But then all of a sudden, somebody says, man, we need to clean property, build equipment, something gets thrown away, it's like, bring on the grants. So we need, there's a balance there. We need, there's people that need help. There's projects that are good projects to do, but there's also, we have to sit there and hold, we won't give people a grant. They have to basically continue their grant forward. It sounds like they are. It sounds like their plan is to get the, if they get this rig built in, their plan on moving the whole nine hundred acres, which is awesome.
So I, I have two questions.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we going to close? Is this, this is for Dominic or this is? Do we have additional public comment? Because we're going to close public comment then and go to city council? Okay, is that okay? We all right? Anything to add from public? Okay. Dominic, thank you, and thank you, Steve. Thank you, Elena.
So I have one question for Dominic. If, if we were to write a letter of support, which costs the city nothing to do. There's no inherent harm in this, especially considering the city is not ready at this point in time to go after grants on its own. And if this is a project that is ready to start giving grant money, it could motivate people to work on. Does, is that a fair thing?
Yes, the other thing you have to take consideration is these projects need to happen, but they get a grant.
Yeah, of course. Yes, yes, I get.
City should be back, should be budgeting money for this. If you look in the past, I use the example of streets, and so all the same, the city budgeted for those things. And over time, uh government agencies have got away from that and more increasingly look at grants. So you have fire service going out to get a grant to buy cars and get the police department to get a grant to buy police cars. Those used to be things that were bottom of the budget. And then all of a sudden, we stopped doing that and we rely on grants for all the stuff. So part of it is the city, whether they hear a grant or not, needs to start saying, how are we going to do this? So with us, the fire district, we, we basically go out and we be proactive, we come in, we clean up the burn. We borrow dozers, come and hook fire lines in at hilltops to people and everything else. We try to do more and more stuff like that. We, as the government entity, are actually going to have means in these projects, not with grants, which is part of our budgeting process.
So I need, you and I need to meet.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have a question for Steve.
Yeah.
But you said that you were going to be meeting with adjacent property owners?
Yeah.
To, I find that part far more, has far more potential to help Amber City. Because as I look at the map, if you go west from that property, those properties are adjacent directly to Amber City.
Yes, and
And I, I mean, we, I think we know the major property owner who's been somewhat resistant in the past. If there could be inroads in that relationship where we could encourage that property owner to be a part of this project. No, no, it's uh Luxembourg. Luxembourg.
Well, all right, so you know, I mean, I have this app on my phone that's called OnX and it tells me we want all these properties, you know. And, you know, I mean, the initial push here was because it's nine hundred acres. And the fire state council really likes dealing with fewer
Sure.
property owners. I mean, I can tell you where, we just did a uh big review on the Jackson Creek Forest Health Project, okay, phase two. We have tons of property.
Yeah.
We have to go out and, and we had a big grant, three million dollars. And, and it basically stretches from Highway eighty-eight near the Ranjaria store south to Clinton Road. It's a thousand acres. So we have to give what we call rights of entry from all these landowners. Some landowners were just more than happy to sign that right of entry. Some landowners were like the chief was saying, you know, no, you know, no trespassing, stay out. Which works, and, and you know, I tell people, sometimes I get into these, these discussions with people and somebody will say, well, private property rights, private property rights. And I go, yeah, I believe in private property rights too, but I also believe in private property responsibilities. And I've been around long enough on the resource conservation district where we've put in three other projects like this. And I can tell you that almost uniformly, landowners did no maintenance. And now it's back to close to where it was when we started. They got free money to, to modify the vegetation on their property and they didn't take the responsibility to maintain it. Now, the rendage's intention is noble, idealistic, and I hope they can follow through. I, I have no doubt that they don't really have a clue as to how much work it's going to take.
Do you think, do you think that they would pursue this project if they don't get a grant?
To a certain extent, yes. I mean, they'll, it'll be slower, they'll be nibbling at it instead of taking bigger bites. They've already started, they hired a, a local contractor to basically follow these ridges uh with his masticator and open up trails. Because I've ridden on those trails with them in their, their four by four thing and, and you know, the, the brush was right up against us. And it's whipping us as we're going by. Well, now you don't have to do that because they've spent a whole bunch of money having this guy go around and open these trails. So when we go out here to, to lay this thing out, and we go out to plan it, we're going to have great access. Now, the other landowners, you know, what we're hoping, and sometimes this, this happens and sometimes it doesn't. A landowner sees, the neighbor sees the landowner doing this work, and they go, hey, I'd like to do that. That'd be cool, you know, and sometimes that happens. Sometimes they just kind of I've honestly talked to people, and I won't tell you the organization that they came from, but they believe in chaos. They believe, you know, just let it go, let it out. And, you know, I mean, as the chief said, the Indians didn't believe in that. You know, so at any rate, to, not to keep going, I mean, I can keep going on this kind of stuff forever. But uh, yeah, I mean, there, everything that the chief said is absolutely true. And I've seen it happen. You know, all I can do is, you know, I've got a client that wants to make something happen, I'm going to try and find a way to make that. If the city can help us out with that, I'd appreciate it at no cost.
Well, I'm going to come back to council for a minute because we
Well, one thing I can say real quick, so last year, the board's, I think, last year, twenty-two, board supervisor adopted the ordinance. I was the only one meeting and told them not to. The reason I told them not to do it is they exempted the land without structures. Right? Not right. But if you have, if you have a house, house with one acre house, they'll come out and write you up, tell you from your property. But the person with six hundred acres around you without a house, they lives in San Francisco. And it's exempt. Yeah, well, nobody does anything. One way we can fix these problems is they put an ordinance that deals with property that is undeveloped. Because that's, that's the problem. The other one, you got A B Cs like B L M, who have a property all over the place, and order he does nothing to the property. That's not the city. So it has, there's a lot of people who are threatened by B L M problems. US Forest Service, most of them, something, but B L M has scattered a property all throughout the
So real close here.
Yeah, so part of it might be is, you know, support a project like this, but also write a letter to the board supervisors saying, hey, when can we develop? Because like in the city of Amber City, you get the stop and ordinance to deal with vacant land.
Yeah.
We've been dealing with certain, over South City, South Creek, with vacant land for a long time. So we go inspect every piece of property, and we're planning on doing the same thing in Amber City this year. And basically, there's going to be costs of people not happy, you know, but
Okay. I'm making my list of things we need to talk about, Dominic. Okay, chief, okay. But before we move on to motion, any other questions for Steve about the project? Bruce? Susan?
No.
Okay, no more for me. I think you've been a great proposal. So do we have a motion to write a letter of support for this project that is going forward at no cost to Amber City? Okay, again, by roll call, Susan?
Yeah, I.
Bruce?
I.
Ian?
I.
Sandy?
I.
So the motion is passed. Thank you very much. Okay, we will be in touch, chief. Okay, I can see you got, yeah, a long list for me, right? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Item nine C, report on the meeting with landscape personnel from Acro regarding potential contract with Amber County Recreation Agency. Bruce?
I got to walk around the city with Diane, who's one that actually tells them. And she was going to report to Mike, who's in charge of Akron. And I haven't heard back from him.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Okay. That's easy.
Okay. Great, so no action, we'll carry it forward. Um, item ninety, report city park project. And you had like eight emails alone today on that.
I haven't seen them all.
Okay.
But um, but I, I do have, I do have information to report on um the park. So the first, the first thing to report is that Holly and I are, I would say, two thirds of the way through with the reimbursement application. Um, you know, it's a learning process. Holly got all of the financial parts together just on. Um, but being naive in this situation, um, you know, there's an audit checklist that we were unaware of and so forth, so um, and so we will, I believe, we, and then I believe that at the next meeting, we will need to pass a resolution of completion.
Okay.
And then we'll be able to submit. And then we get paid in the new fiscal year. So that's, it's not, when she said, oh, you're going to have to wait till the new fiscal year, I've, I kind of went a little nuts. And then I realized it's only a month and a half away, so. Yeah, so, yeah, so that's, but I did want to, I did want to report on, since, since Holly did such a good job pulling together all the expenses on the park. Um, if you recall, um, I should have made a handout for you, but I didn't. Um, our grant amount, and I've, I've got this written down so I can give this to Joyce, is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred, a hundred and seventy-seven, nine hundred and fifty-two.
That's close.
One, seven, seven, ninety-two. That's what it is. Um, and um and, and to uh, and our total, original estimate on the total project was two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty. And the city was responsible for a forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight match. The good news is that we will get thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three of that, those dollars from Sierra to match. So, so that meant that at the time we started the park project, that we believed that the city from the general fund would pay six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Right.
Now that we've put the financials together, we have gone a little bit over Now that we've put the financials together, we have gone a little bit over budget, but not hugely over budget. Um, so what the city, and, and, and in addition, um, there are. A couple of tasks that we, physical tasks in the park that we have to complete. We have to paint. The stripes on the court and we need to get more volunteers to do that. So we're gonna. Be rounding up volunteers sometime, probably the second week of June. Um, and the reason we waited so late is finally the nighttime temperatures are above the.
Fifty.
Fifty degrees. Um, and so, so we'll need to do that. Um, we need that, in order to get the CERA grant. We need to have a safety inspection of the playground equipment, so we're scheduling that. Either this next week or the week after, and that's gonna be another eight hundred dollars. So I figured that the, I figured that we have probably. Not, no more than two thousand dollars total expenses, that the inspection, paint, the equipment, we should be able to. What that means is that the general fund will have to, um, we will have to get ten thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. From the general fund. I'll give you this, Joyce, on a piece of. So again, originally, we thought it was gonna be six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. Now the, the reality, it's gonna be seven, ten, ten thousand, three hundred and forty-five.
Uh, what is the ten thousand?
That's how much is gonna have to come out of the general fund, not reimbursed by.
And how much are we getting reimbursed?
We're getting a hundred and seventy-seven thou, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two. From the grant and we're getting thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three from CERA. So we're getting all but that last ten thousand. So, so, um, yeah, so, you know, we're, again. We're not, we're not done until we're done, but I believe at our next June meeting, we will be done.
Good. And at the June meeting, that's when you'd like a resolution of completion?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do a resolution of completion to include with our tackle.
Great, okay.
And, yeah, so anyway, but I, I mean, you know, considering projects, you know, I think that we're only. Three thousand, five hundred dollars over budget over a project that big is not bad.
Yeah.
Other comment? Other comments closed. Any comment from council members? Well, I sent this in an email to you and Holly, but I just wanted to state again that the day you, the two of you were working on this project and I looked out and there were. Three adults and three kids and the kids were playing and the adults were relaxing and talking and it was just.
Yeah.
This is a real benefit to the town, Anne, and, and kudos for this project and all the work you and Holly have. Had to put into it.
And Dave and Larry and, well, you know, it's.
But you, you and Holly were the spearheads for those, and you in particular. So thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so, item nine E, proposal for a development of a sewer committee, scope, purpose, configuration, Susan?
And I was supposed to bring it. A proposal, kind of, with ideas, and I'm sorry, the print is so small. But I, I just think there are many issues related to our sewer system. That we need a group to study all the issues. And I mentioned about ten of them.
Hmm.
Like studying what other cities do, what they charge, uh, how they charge. Uh, I understand some towns charge for vacant buildings that are hooked up to the system. And I, I don't know if we do that.
We do.
We do. The vacant ones? Oh, good. Uh.
Everyone who's hooked up pays.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um. Let's see, what else? Compare our regulations with others. New ideas maybe for disposal. Spray fields, possibly. Um. It, it just makes me mad that we have to be at Sutter Creek's command. Whatever they decide, get, is their decision. We have one vote and it doesn't much matter. Uh, I'd like to, I'd like to study Jackson's tertiary system. So, um. And, uh. Sutter Creek's, um, costs are going way up. And I think a lot of people are fighting it, but we will end up having to pay a lot more.
Hmm.
And it just seems like we need to get down in the details and just see if we can come up with some ideas.
Before we talk about that, you had an arson meeting? And?
Um, basically, you know, before the dissolution of arson, we have to have a, we have to. Set a brief schedule with, with Amber County and Amber City.
Cause we have money in the game.
Well.
Well, we are dependent on them. The money is out, Susan.
Well, we did have money.
We don't have money in the game anymore.
The money is all gone.
Yeah.
But what we have to do is, we have to have a brief schedule as to what the tertiary should go with.
Is there any timeline for that?
Uh, it's coming up pretty quick.
Hmm.
Uh, I think Pat and maybe Jay have been.
Well, that's the thing, I, I had lunch with other city managers, so it affects as well as from the county. Uh, we, Tom, the law, talked to us and he said he would be in touch, so.
Hmm.
He, he's been good to contact us when there's a need on their part. Haven't heard anything since that meeting, so. But i- it's coming, yes.
Um, and the reason I, I brought that up, Susan, is I, I'm chill. I'm speaking before council people, which is not the order of things. I'm really sorry. I think until that order of agreement with Sutter Creek comes in. We don't have a direction. We're looking for a problem, we're looking for a solution. We don't have the problem defined yet. We know Sutter Creek might be a problem, but we don't have the agreement yet. That's my thought.
Oh, that's just one of the issues.
Hmm, yeah. Any other perspective on?
I mean, I firmly believe Amber City's gonna have to stand on its own.
It would be wonderful.
I mean, I, I think it's a possibility.
Yes.
But it takes, it's gonna take a lot of work.
Hmm.
It's gonna be very expensive. If Amber City builds its own plant or does another one. I mean, more money than, more money than we raise. I mean, we don't raise enough to cover all the ponds right now.
Hmm.
But it's gonna cost us more than paying rent to Sutter Creek.
Hmm.
Yeah, and there are more units that are not paying their way, which I've been bragging about for quite a while. That's, and who, who, what do we do about it?
Who's not, who's not paying their way?
There's some places, well, Dave Bissell has three units, he pays for one. There's, there's several places like that, but who, what do we do about it?
That's an agenda item. Uh, I know that's been an issue in the past, with ADUs. There was. So, again, my recommendation there, Susan, that if you have that as an issue. I would, it would be a, a thing you would wanna put on the agenda and do the investigation research to inform the council of those. So, cause, cause as it currently stands, every sewer connection pays. So whether it's abandoned or multiple on one, a- as the city goes by connection. That fee is being charged and the city is receiving that. Whether that, that circle of fees for sewer and our maintenance, that's a full-blown issue.
Well, every dwelling unit should pay.
Well.
I, bottom line is, I think you'd have to amend the ordinance clearly and it would have to be. As the other one, the past or, uh. Before you make a sea change in the way that, uh, assessments are made to the sewer and I, I compare with. Susan's comment that it's not totally equitable. I mean, it, it's a compromise, obviously, what we have now, but, um. If it's gonna change, it would report a new property.
I think our ordinance handles.
Hmm.
I think our ordinance handles multi, multiple units, it handles commercial, it handles. Single residential units. What it, what it doesn't, well, what, what it does in the shield for is the people who have illegal units.
Hmm.
And there are those.
And so, that's a building inspector problem, I think, that, that we somehow have to, somebody has to report. Someone has to report Dave Bissell to Larry White. And Larry White has to go and inspect his units and then.
Right.
And then, we do have a process for dealing that, but somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta say. I'm calling, I'm calling him, my neighbor, and I'm doing that. And I know Russ had an ADU or an unofficial one, but it's official now. And every new ADU in town. Has to have a sewer bill.
Hmm.
So, so, so suits the Anne's point, if there is that going on, it needs to be, you need to look into it. And report that to Larry White, right? He's sort of, and then he goes and enforces it. It's not a matter of the council. The council has already put those tools in place. It's now a matter of enforcement.
And it is that.
It is, and it. As Anne did a great job a year ago and a half of making sure the ordinance was equitable and fair.
Hmm.
When it came to like, cause again, we had the issue with the hotel and previous agreements and working that out. And then multiple units as they stand as are known to the city. So again, there's an unknown quality there. And it's an enforcement issue by the city inspector to then go and inspect and then require that change. Through, and that would then include the staff to, to alert our billing department to then bill accordingly.
Okay, well, there are other properties too.
But if we know what they are, then they need to get reported. But I, I don't, you know, unless we wanna. You know, we could do, if it's, if we have a committee who's willing to go around and go to every house and. You know, ask how many units they have, you know? But, yeah, go ahead.
Well, for one thing, I told my, my friend, my neighbor, my tenant, don't put anybody in your house.
Of course.
Cause I think it's incredible that we would do that.
Right.
But also you need to define what is a unit. Cause some, some people have guest rooms. They even have guest quarters.
Yes, that's.
That's then separate, but there's still kitchen.
Yeah, that's a, that's called a junior ADU and that does not require a sewer.
So it needs, that needs to be, that needs to be clearly defined. It has to have a kitchen and then you have to define what is a kitchen. And, and basically, it's gotta have a stove.
Well, and, and the, the.
A cooking.
The, the state's law that, that was passed, I think it was last year. Well, well, related to ADUs and JADUs, junior ADUs, was very clear. And if you, if it's a unit that's essentially with inside of a house, like a little. Mother-in-law room, maybe there's a microwave or something, that is a JADU. And it does not require a separate. Even if, even if it's an extra toilet, you know?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a.
Yeah, so I think those things are clear, but I, I think. I mean, I just, I don't see how, I don't see how we can. And unless we tell people to, to report their neighbors, I don't know. I don't know how we do that. I don't know how we, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna find six, six new people. Then, you know, six new sewer bills. And that'll be.
Not that much.
Five hundred dollars a month.
And I want to.
I, I.
Our, our bills are gonna get really high.
Yes, they are gonna.
And we just need to, I'm thinking of Ray's, the amateur hotel. We need to relook at how we do that and. Uh, see if we still wanna do that.
Well, I think, I think we're getting away from your proposal for sewer. I think you're highlighting things that you want to have discussed by sewer committee.
Yeah.
So I wanted to come back to the, um, the need to have or the, the support for having a sewer committee. And I wanna ask some questions about how you envision this. Is this. A, there'd be a city council person on it, no more than two. Who do you envision also participating? Or are you gonna advertise or say we have openings for? What's the scope? How long do you envision this being in operation?
Well, forever is the time. Uh, maybe two council people. And maybe a public citizen who is interested. I don't know, it just seems like there are a lot of issues. That we need to be sure we're doing the right thing because we're gonna be paying through the nose.
Hmm. Along with that, you were looking into the sewer study that was done and whether or not. I believe we had that conversation, Dave.
We did, and I had that in my report. I'll just, I'll just say that.
Would you?
I've been in touch with the, uh, entity that did it before and they believe that they can take the work that's already been done.
Hmm.
And give us an update to fit so that the council doesn't, we don't have to go through the whole process again.
Hmm.
Now, again, we have to do a two eighteen if we change the structure of the fee.
Hmm.
But we can use, what they're saying is that process will be done, but they can use the information that's already gathered. So all that work and energy. They'll have to do a certain amount, but if, if we won't be starting, we'll, we won't reinvent it. And they were willing to do it.
I, I think that we, I mean, when they do that, I think that we need to get an updated list of possible capital projects and grant. Because there's, there are some, I believe, that were not in his list the last time. So that's just one. I mean, but that's easy to do.
But, but see, these are all pieces of what a sewer committee might need information for, whom they might get that. So that's the reason I brought that up and why what you brought up is a valid point there. So. You've made your pitch, Susan.
I tried.
Okay, and I think, you know, you're gonna probably want to involve. Knowledgeable experts in this particular area.
Well, it would just seem to be nice to involve Dave too.
Hmm. One more committee, Dave is welcome to say my, my plate is full.
Go ahead, it's warm first.
Right, so.
And maybe if, if you vote it down, I won't have to worry about it.
No, it's, um. I think we've got a lot of moving parts for this. You know, we, we need the agreement with Sutter Creek. We need the updated sewer information. We may need the capital improvement. Um, I, those projects identified. So there are some moving parts to a committee. That a committee would require to really take action, I think, at this point, is my thought. Any other thoughts on it?
Oh, I think the committee would come and report to the council and have to get approval from the council. Cause I don't know that we'd take any action.
Oh, no, but those are pieces of information the committee would find invaluable. In terms of the focus of study you proposed.
Just trying to keep, keep the rates rational.
But the, the committee can't, has no bearing on what the rates are.
No.
Because that, that is all determined by the rate study.
Hmm, and by what Sutter Creek's agreement with us is going to be.
Included in, yeah, that's part of what should be.
Really what a committee can do at this point is look at future endeavors.
Hmm.
To see what needs to be done based upon what is going to happen.
Planning.
If that makes sense. So it's future planning. So, as the point that Dominic made. Boards like fire trucks and, and police cars, when you budget those things, this is essentially is creating the budget.
Hmm.
Not monetarily, but creating the infrastructure within the city with the committee to say, here are the options. Present them to the city so that those actions can be taken on a future date.
Actually, that might be, instead of an, instead of a committee with an indeterminate length, what you might say is. We have a committee that has a six-month commission and that commission is to. Focus on future options for the city. Because I think all of these other things that are happening right now, like the raids. The contract with Sutter Creek, those are, we, we, those are not things that a committee can influence. But what they could do is they could say, we've studied the Jackson tertiary plant. And we've studied this other option and, and then do a presentation to the city council.
Hmm.
You know, here, here are three possible options where. You know, that could make us independent or less reliant on Sutter Creek. And that might be a more interesting committee, like a study group.
And then to that point, a committee would be good to also look for any like grants that are out there. Uh, like, you know, the FDA has grants for water treatment, for water storage. That may be something that a committee. Member may be really good at to contact and to look for those things.
Hmm.
Where then we're not, uh, to Anne's point, where they're bringing that within a given time to say, here's the action taken, here's the grant that's available. Here's how that can be acted and then the council can vote on it as an informed board rather than trying to individually do that. Without that direction.
I, I think it'd be interesting to see what other municipalities are doing, especially the small ones.
Aren't there specialists that deal in grants?
There are, there are.
They could pay them.
But you could have, you could have there, that's that's again, if you're if you're opening it up to the public. There may be an individual who lives within Amador City. That is a grand specialist who's willing to give their time and willing to do that. So again, that's why committees are so invaluable to municipality. Because they bring those outside entities in for voluntary reasons. What otherwise, like to Ann's point, you, there are there are specialists out there that you can pay. Thousands to tens of thousands of dollars for them to do the grant. Whereas if you've got an individual that does that profession who wants to donate that time. It it runs the same course without the the burden on the city.
Yeah, I don't suggest spending anything.
So, yeah. Okay, anyway.
Just an idea.
Okay, well, with that. Sort of configuration of your proposal proposal that it is a study group with a future looking focus. Gathering information on what other small municipalities do. What some future options for. An entity such as our size, our footprint, what might be possible. And within that, are there. Grant monies that might be pursued.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So with that as a configuration, do we have a proposal for a study group? Is that what you worded it as? Study group focusing on so. Future sewer options for the city of Amador City with these is sort of their their pillars to start with.
Small steps.
Small steps. Is there a motion for a study group of this nature to be formed for Amador City?
Can I make the motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Is there a second for Susan's motion?
So much for that idea.
No, so um, we'll do roll call vote. Uh, Susan.
Uh, I.
Bruce.
I.
Ann.
She's not sure.
Well, I just don't know who's gonna do it, but I.
It's all free.
I I I'm going to vote I for the formation of the group as well because. The group will will be, what the group comes up with will be a measure of its success. Okay?
That sounds good.
So it was approved.
Just briefly, could you give me the main things the group is gonna do?
Okay, um, is the study group uh, looking at future options?
Called an ad hoc study.
Ad hoc, thank you.
Yeah.
Good job. Knew we'd have group think here. It's gonna be future looking. What possible options there are.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was buzzing on.
It's chasing me.
There are for self sufficiency or for sewer treatment and options for Amador City. To do research on what other small entities. Might have. Put into place um. To possibly come up to pursue some grant possibilities.
Okay, that's enough.
We need to see what the Scandinavians do.
We, Susan, they're socialists and I don't think that would appeal to you.
That's why I mentioned them.
Okay. Okay, um. Item nine F, uh, report required review of amateur cities conflict of interest code.
So I'll make this really quick. Essentially what it is is we are partly in compliance with the requirement from the F C C P. Every council member and employee of the city should be filling out a form seven hundred annually. But also as part of that, the city is required to update and keep updated. Its code when it comes to conflict of interest, which based upon the email with the help of the mayor, we looked into it. We have not updated our code probably since nineteen ninety two. And so we need to do that. We have until July to do it. So it'll be an agenda item next council meeting. Our our basically our our conflict of interest with the help of. Our community partners that provide with the F C P, F C C P. We will have an updated code that we would, if we can pass by resolution. And so the city has that and we're in compliance. Then, of course, we send it to the F C C P. And they review it and then send it back with any issues they see and so then we can update it. But the the requirement is that it's annually updated if there's any changes. And we've had lots of changes since nineteen ninety two and so we will act in accordance with this requirement.
Okay, so that'll be on the agenda next time then.
Is that posted online anywhere? Is it accessible so that it can be read? I know the county, the county is when I worked there.
Our our code is and it's under the municipal code. I think what was the title to? I'm sorry?
The conflict of interest code could just be attached to a resolution when it was adopted. I don't know if it's necessarily part of the municipal code.
We have ours on Muni Code. It's chapter two point zero four.
Very good.
But again, it hasn't been updated.
That those that the Muni Code.
Not since the internet.
They're on, aren't they?
They're, well, they're, yeah. But they're all, I mean, they're on, but those are, those all originated as ordinance, it's not resolutions.
Right, right. We we can up, we can amend it.
With the resolution.
With the resolution. Right, what the F C C P said.
Okay.
So.
I didn't know it was in the um code, but you say it is. readily acceptable.
Just just hasn't been updated as 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 it been required. So they're good to remind us of it. So something we need to be on top of.
And that is the regular agenda, those are the regular agenda items. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dave. For I, you know, the council committee report discussion.
So uh, in conversations with uh, the mayor this morning in our staff meeting. We've looked at our agenda and again, we're trying our best to streamline these meetings because we appreciate everyone's time. And energies, the other thing we looked at is given the hour that we get to item ten. There's just no public participation at this point. And also. Looking through it, the committees, for the most part. It's redundant when we get to the committee reports because most of that has come up, like as I've monitored this evening. Many of like we had the fire department, there's a few here that we hadn't. So what we're gonna ask is that uh. Either during the meeting or in eleven C. When there's reports from council members, that if you're on a committee, you just give your update at that time. So what we require is if there's a substantial thing, and a good example is that today is Ann reported on. What she had been involved with with the board of supervisors in the road study during the public comment. So it was made at that time. Again, Ann will now repeat that in her council comments. It's already been shared. And so. The other part too is we would ask if you have chance to attend a committee meeting. And would like to share that information and we can include it in the packet, a simple email would would be sufficient to do that. So again, we're going to eliminate. Section ten from our agenda, just because like I said, it's already either being reported on or you'll be given the chance to do that in in eleven.
So just a quick question and this is more just about. Cause LaFco meeting is at five thirty, right? I can't send an email that would be in this packet. I can, I I report on it, but that's okay.
That would just be in your in in eleven C when you.
Or if it was important information for the general public, you know, to have right out there. I think during like you did, like I asked you to do tonight, like you did. I just because that is something that may have conversation from other people. Does that make sense? Thanks.
And and that was the thing, we didn't encourage.
I know.
We encourage council members to share also. I think there's a stigma that you don't share in the the open time. That's all, that's a stigma that's incorrect. You also have that time to share the things you're involved in if you feel that it deals with the public matter. Uh, that to your point, uh, and yes, that would be appropriate to share that. One of the reasons why we're doing this is not only to streamline the meeting. We're grateful for each of you in the committees that you participate in the reports. However, there have been times when the committees have no report. And it kind of has a negative effect by thinking, why aren't people doing things? And so we're also trying to eliminate that. From being something that the public sees when they look at a council and go, why aren't you ever involved in anything? Which may not be the case, like for instance, many of the the committee meetings. Like we have, you know, Arsa has been the standing, they just didn't meet today. That has nothing to do with the committee member here. It has to do with the committee as a whole. And so there's no real need to report that. And make it look like that our council is not being active when you are all very active in your responsibilities.
I think it'd be nice to somehow have a list. That we can look at and think of things, maybe we can ask. About certain items, just to re- remember all the committees.
I can get that to you, Susan, and then you can know the liaison for them.
You say you can do that?
I can get you that wish you want.
Oh.
You want yourself to have this list just to be be able to ask questions? Of course.
Yeah.
I can get that to you.
We're we're just not putting it in the agenda. At this point.
Yeah.
That's the big change. So.
There any discussion on that?
So I can just cross.
Yep. Yep, so that moves us.
So just quickly, again, I know it's getting late, so I'll make this. Uh, things that I've been working on for the city, it's in the behalf. Uh, request for proposals, we've had that now published two weeks in the local paper have not had a response. And so based on how that is handled, we're actually uh, going to make sure that all, we're looking for an accounting firm to do an audit. We're gonna make sure that all the local accounting firms are aware of it by simply handing them the request for proposal. So that they know and have knowledge of it. Again, it is no preference to a single one. It's just in case they aren't seeing that because we need one. And our hope is that, of course, we would have gotten on this time. It's not happened. So we just wanna follow through with our local agencies. And so. I will, Holly's actually gonna be the one to do that. She's just gonna go drop them off at the offices. So and then also, uh, as you're aware, there is an opening on the council because council member Robinson stepped down. Uh, we've had one response so far that came in today. Uh, it does appear that there may be an issue with that. Uh, which again, I am working with the county elections to kind of figure out where we stand on the elections that's in the process. Which will affect that one and we may ultimately have to direct like this individual, given the status to the county elections to do that. Um, and then next thing also is we've made some changes to. Uh, how we deal with the property management of the city, so like the firehouse. Um, the city hall, the the parks, uh, that's fallen under my responsibilities again. Uh, this deals like, for instance, with the firehouse, old firehouse, city hall, we rented it out. Unfortunately. The process of policy was not in place to have an inspection prior to, which has now led to a can of worms, which we're looking into. But what it comes down to is we're requiring any tenant or any situation to be submitted to myself in writing. And then depending on what it is, that approval can be made. So for instance, like the permit for the event. As you'll probably notice, we had the dancing in the streets sign go up last week and then it came down. Because they've actually not submitted a permit requirement. So what happened? Is we had members of the public that live here, as well as the businesses approach the city. And ask for mitigation from dancing in the streets because they feel it's in conflict. And so with the mayor's help, we looked at the ordinance that was passed years ago. That actually governs especially as an incident city. And our application did not actually correspond or fit with that ordinance. And so we revised that ordinance. And so what happens is with the permit, yes. So what'll happen, we didn't revise, excuse me, we didn't revise the order, revise the permit to now fit. So that we cover ourselves, but also make sure that we we check all the boxes. And what'll happen? Is they can come to Joyce and request that that permit. And then they take that permit, fill it out and then submit it back to Joyce. At that point, they make payment. And then I will, under my responsibilities, review. That permit to make sure they're all, all things are met. If they haven't met them, then we can either request that they fix it.
And what didn't they do?
Well, this is just a generalization.
Oh.
So what'll happen is the permit will be received, will be reviewed. We can offer them the ability to fix it if they want to, or we can reject it. The thing is, is they're not, the point is. We're not directing them to the council, which has been something that's done in the past and. Yes, you've become the administrative, the appellate arm. So if someone doesn't agree with the decision that's made on a permit. Then they can come to the council and I will have to present why I did the thing that I did according to the ordinance. And then they can ask the council to either uh. Go in recurrence with my decision or to change their mind and go against that. But again, that'll be an open discussion for the public. We had same thing with any property. Because again, one of the things we're running into is we have a lot of requests that potentially. Are the gifting of public funds based upon what they're asking for. And so that decision can be made and if they don't agree with it. By keeping the council neutral and you becoming the administrative board, they can then appeal every decision to the council. And the council has the ultimate say. That's a lot to digest, so. Sorry, Susan, you just look like it's nine, it's almost nine o'clock, stop talking here.
And I can walk you through.
Can we see the permit at the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, it's in the file, yeah. And the ordinance, I also scanned and cleaned up the ordinance because it was um. Hard to read. It was an old, old copy.
Oh.
So it's in, it's in there as well. So yes, absolutely.
But I mean, can, yeah, I mean, so when we have a discussion with it.
Oh, absolutely.
Just curious about the changes.
Is it the in the Muni Code?
Mm-hmm, the ordinance, yes. Oh, it's not online though, because the original copy wouldn't wouldn't scan, they they couldn't put it on. But it could be put on now because I rescanned it and cleaned it up.
So, but but yes, essentially, well, it's not changing, it just made it more readable, right?
Oh, yeah, no, I did not. No, no. It was.
It was.
It had water stains. But thank you, Pat.
Put it into a clear and readable and. Postable slogan.
Thank you, in its in its original language. Thank you.
No monkey with that, they can put it on the agenda in the future.
So essentially, just to sum it up, is essentially we have, it's the it's the enforcement arm of the ordinance. That's already there that we weren't doing. So simply the the application now. Enforces the rules within the ordinance and it's just a matter of checking the box for approval or disapproval. And if they don't agree with it, that then gives them the administrative arm of the council to.
But what was, I don't understand what was missing, no application?
There there.
Oh, for dancing in the streets?
Special event, just special.
Special events.
Yeah.
I just use that one as an example because as you saw, they had their sign on. And then it was taken down because they hadn't, they hadn't, they had pulled a permit. But they hadn't submitted anything. And as part of that, the event permit requires, as does the ordinance. That you have a permit issued before you advertise. Right, they haven't done any, so. And again, we're not, we're not trying to make it difficult. We're just simply trying to follow the rules of the council as previously. Established that may not have been effectively instituted before.
That's a very nice, simple explanation. Thank you.
You're welcome. Same with code enforcement standpoint, if you let them slip and just say, oh, don't worry about it. Then you have to let other people similarly situated.
Yeah.
Uh, don't worry about it. And then pretty soon you don't have any enforcement.
Right, which you'll notice there's the the one for the five K run. They followed the rules and did it appropriately. When the wagon train, they did it appropriately. And so again, it's, we don't want. Yeah, that's for dancing in the streets. Which.
Is canceled. They can't, they canceled it. That's what I, that's what I heard.
There's a small.
Meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah, and there are two people who are trying to see if they can salvage at least one of them. I don't know if they made a decision after Tuesday. I was there Tuesday.
Were you?
They, that's. What they're doing. This, so it's it's still a little unknown, Pat.
It's okay, well, I, well, my only knows, well.
Yeah. I think the bigger, the the bigger thing was that this the city was open to some liability issues. And to also picking up some costs for. Events that were not city sponsored events. I mean, we were the ones handling the trash. We were the ones. Who were left with the issues from the business owners regarding lack of cleanup. Um, there were also some violations of the A C B C A of the A's, thank you. Of the of the liquor codes. The and the businesses were concerned that their licenses were being compromised with some of the. Lack of um. Structure for events that can be very clearly. Identified within the permit now, what is the plan for? What is the plan for? So it it is a protection for us and I think it will um. Result in in sort of some clarity in terms of how things proceed. Anyway. I didn't mean to birdwalk on that one. I'm sorry.
Last thing is we looked into, just Pat had made the request last council meeting, given our transition to. Uh, YouTube for a Zoom, so he could do the surgery and be away. We we've looked into it and we can, we would just privately Zoom to you, Pat.
Okay.
Cause or, I was gonna say, I've scheduled my operation now, it's July the eighth, so I know that. So the July meeting.
Doc said I can't drive for a month. I can get my wife to drive me here possibly, maybe, uh, but if I could appear remotely, I'd be.
We can. And that and that same applies for the council members as well. We simply just won't be publishing that private Zoom because we already furnished the YouTube. Forum for recording as well as the public. So again, there's no threat of what we experienced before.
Yes. Yes.
No, it will be, a private Zoom, public will know that we have a member who is remotely participating. But remotely participating doesn't require us to open it up to remote participation to the public.
Yeah, during the pandemic, it was quite clear that we could operate remotely with council members and and especially groups without no odds. And I can then, you know, the tail end of the pandemic, so.
That ended.
Go to the next one.
Yeah. Okay. So, Pat, do you have, do you have?
Well, yes, I did schedule my surgery, so, but but uh, we, that's taken care of.
Okay, we can set up a private Zoom. Good. So. Council member reports, anything uncovered tonight that you want to share? Bruce, anything else?
No.
Susan?
Uh, I'm transitioning out of ACTC and BPA, and Bike and Pedestrian Committee uh to Sandy. So you'll be coming with me to the next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, and you can meet all the good old boys.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Thank you, Susan.
Out of um ACTC?
And BPA.
And BPA. Which is bike, biking and pedestrian.
Wait a minute, bike?
Bike and pedestrian.
Oh, okay. LAFCO passed its next, it's twenty-four, twenty-five project. That was basically what happened.
And um, I would just briefly say that we're proceeding with the documents to have Measure K fully implemented after the passage. Hopefully, the vote and vocal passage of the ordinance uh next week, whatever, whatever the date is, we're doing.
Yeah.
The week after, then uh things are.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Things are filed now with the California Transportation Commission. The next documents and the ordinance will go to the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. And then we will be able to, they will be notifying the businesses about the tax, and it was not being. Uh, levied in October, and we will be collecting it as of October. October, then the this, the third quarter of the fiscal year.
Of this year.
Two thousand twenty-four.
Otherwise, if if we didn't have a special meeting, it delayed by at least a quarter.
Yes. And we need every little penny. So, any other comments tonight? With that, the meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
So, we'll post that special meeting. Thank you all.